Give us an invocation, please. And Barbara, oh, we'll get to that. Will you do the pledge?
Sure.
Father, thank you for being with us today. Please empower our deliberations. You all come out the way you intend. Jesus name is the Lord.
I pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to welcome you to the City of Benita Springs Board for Land Use Hearings and Adjustments and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Before we begin, I want to welcome our newest member, Barbara Barnes Buchanan, to the zoning board. Welcome, Barbara.
Thank you so much.
I know Barbara will be able to lend a lot of good support and help and experience to our zoning board, having previously been city manager for the City of Benita. And she's a consultant and...
She got a raise.
And what?
She got a raise.
Promotion.
She was a manager. She was an assistant manager. Sorry.
We're getting twice as much this year as we got last year, the whole zoning board. So we're getting double zero.
That's it.
Anyways, we want to continue with the roll call, please.
Robert Inserby, Stephen Kissinger, Barbara Barnes Buchanan, Chairman Brunswick.
Here.
Richard Donnelly.
Here.
Frank Lyles.
Here.
James Worster.
Here.
Thank you. And if you would, please, would you call the first case, which will be the second case on the docket?
Right, and that's case number PD-1629060BOs, which is Oakland Commercial Plan Development. As stated by Chairman Brunswick, this case is being continued to our next zoning hearing in October?
Eighteenth.
October 18th, thank you, at 9:00 AM in these chambers. However, before we do the continuance, we do have people who are from out of town, so we are opening the record for those people to testify as to the amendment to zoning ordinance 0903, which will amend the master concept plan and reduce commercial intensity from 32,700 square feet to 25,000 square feet of commercial light industrial uses. The property is located at 27971 Oakland Drive in Benita Springs, Florida. At this time, anyone who wishes to testify in this case, who's not going to be available on October 18th, please step up to the dithon, and I'll swear you in.
That would be you.
We'll be available on October 18th. Do you want us to say anything today or just wait?
No, I'd prefer that you wait so that we could hear everything at one time. It was my understanding you were not going to be...
No.
Okay.
We'll in, but we can fly in again.
Are you sure?
Your choice.
We'll be here.
Yeah, we'll be here then.
Okay.
The record's now closed.
We appreciate you considering that.
Okay, so we will close the record on this case until October 18th.
And we will continue it to October 18th, 9:00 AM in these chambers, which is a Tuesday at that time.
So, at this time, we will call the first case of the day...
Which is case number PD-6. Do you need to do a motion to continue? Oakland?
Do we need to make a motion? Somebody make a motion to continue?
Second.
Second. All in favor... Roll call.
Barbara Barnes Buchanan.
Aye.
Chairman Brunswick.
Aye.
Richard Donnelly.
Aye.
Frank Lyles.
Aye.
James Worster.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm calling case number PD-1631764BOs, which is Imperial Benita Plaza Commercial Plan Development, located at 28100 Imperial Parkway, Benita Springs, Florida. And this is a request to amend the existing Imperial Benita Plaza CPD Commercial Plan Development to close an existing northbound directional left turn median on Imperial Parkway at Butler Drive and add a full median opening at Imperial Parkway and Tropic Drive to allow southbound access from Imperial Parkway into the main retail shopping center, as well as to allow a left turn out of the center. At this time, swearing witnesses, and then if I could have anybody who will testify in this case raise their right hand. Uh-huh? Are you a planner?
I'm certified planner.
Okay, I'll be asking you some questions. Do you swear or affirm testimony you provide today is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I agree.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Genson, you've been previously tendered as an expert in land use and planning. Mr. Dolmer, you've been previously tendered as an expert in land use and planning. Mr. Smith, you've been previously tendered as an expert in civil engineering, and you are a professional engineer, registered in the state of Florida, and I think a few other locations, too, for purposes of today. So that everything is substantial competent evidence. We do have a voir dire process, so I'm going to ask you a few questions. If you'd like to go up to the podium, thank you. For the... Please state your full name for the record.
My name is Peter Van Busker. I'm with Kimley Horn and Associates.
Okay, and if you'd raise that a little bit so the microphone picks you up. What do you do at Kimley Horn?
I am a civil engineer and planner. I am licensed with the state of Florida as a professional engineer. I'm also a certified planner with the Institute, American Institute of Certified Planners.
So you have an AICP along with a PE?
That's correct.
Now, without going through a lot of acronyms, where did you go to school for engineering/planning?
I went to Union College in Schenectady, New York, and graduated with a Bachelor of Science.
Okay, and then did you go through the... Could you explain to the tribunal exactly how you became an engineer?
As most engineers in the state of Florida, I have to serve as an engineering intern for four years under the direct supervision of a licensed professional in the state of Florida. And then, once qualified, I can take the exam, which I did pass some 35 years ago, I guess. And throughout my career, I've done multiple types of projects that involved not only civil engineering but land use. I've done a number of entitlement projects, taking land through rezonings, development, regional impacts, done many comp plan amendments in a number of communities throughout southwest Florida.
Have you been tendered as an expert in other zoning cases?
Yes, I have in Lee County.
In Lee County?
Correct.
And is that for Lee County Hearing Examiner and Board of County Commissioners?
That's correct, for both. I've worked on rezonings in Lee County and have been found as an expert witness in both engineering and planning.
Okay, and have you worked on comparable projects comparable to this project?
Yes, I have.
I don't think I have any further questions. I believe he can be tendered as an expert in civil engineering and planning and land use.
Very good, thank you.
And then I just need to swear on one other person, and that's Michael Kirby and Tom Ross. That's one person, so that was two people.
Oh, well, that'd be two.
I know.
One person, or one person with two heads.
All right, if I could have two people raise their right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you provide today is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Now, Mr. Kirby has been previously tendered as an expert in environmental sciences and planning. Mr. Ross is a civil engineer and traffic management. He has been tendered as an expert also. At this time, Ms. Genson will proceed with the case.
Jacqueline, if you could interrupt. I think you have the wrong PD number.
I sure do.
Okay.
So I will... I was just looking at... Oh, gee, 14. Apologize. For the record, Jacqueline Genson, yes, that case reference on the PowerPoint is incorrect. That was... I was using a previous presentation for our... For this plan development and did not change that name, so thank you, Mr. Worster. Okay. With me today, I do have Stuart Smith, who is, as after stated, our civil engineer. Mr. Kirby, our environmental scientist, and also Tom Ross, although I wasn't anticipating him to speak today relative to this subject matter to discuss the case at hand. Again, the request is to amend a plan, an existing plan development to add an additional access point to the shopping center, and staff did recommend approval with conditions. The reason why this case is here, and I did explain it in our staff report, the case was actually brought to our department through a development order process where they were making a median modification. They were coordinating with Lee County DOT and with our engineering office to go ahead and modify a median opening that exists to a full median and add an additional access point. And based on the modifications, staff, through the amendment process in our land development code, opined that this change did constitute possibly a potential adverse impact to the surrounding uses, because it did change the access for Butler Drive and how they would access their property. And we felt that it was an appropriate amendment through the public hearing process to be processed versus an administrative amendment. So that is why the case is here before you. It was a review comment that was brought up during the companion development order process, so that's why the case is here before you through a public hearing. We're doing a new format here with community development and how we present our cases. What we're doing is, number one, the applicant is going to go second, and staff will go first, but we also want to explain to you the findings that staff and a board must go ahead and review an application to make their recommendation. So in this case, the findings for the recommendation, there are nine. There are not 10, because the 10th item is a deviation, and there's no deviations being requested as part of this application request. So during our presentation and as you read the staff report, these are the questions you will ask yourself. Does it meet these nine findings? And based on the questions that you answer, yes or no, will depend on whether you recommend approval or denial. So I just wanted you to keep that in the back of your mind as you listen to the testimony today and based on the review of the staff report. That's how you are supposed to base your recommendations. We also wanted to give you a citywide location map and then identify where the project is so the public and yourselves can understand which section of the city this is affecting. So this is towards the southeastern or south-central portion of the city. And then this is a more zoomed-in location map of the area. So you're at the intersection of Benita Beach Road and Imperial Parkway in the southeast quadrant, and this shows the areas of improvements that are being proposed, and we'll go into detail of that later through the presentation. Wanted to go over the surrounding property, future land use zoning, and current uses. The plan development, actually, the boundary encompasses this area here. This project was amended back in 2014, previously, for this section of the plan development to add a hotel and assisted living and a small retail component. So when I do my analysis, I will be referencing the same plan development, because that's what it borders, since we're talking about a modification to this section of the plan development. So to the east, you have this remainder portion of the plan development that was modified in 2014, and so it's vacant right now. They have been doing some site infrastructure improvements to actually continue this section of Sarah Adrian Lane to connect to the Home Depot Plan Development. And we anticipate the filing of a small hotel and assisted living facility in this area within the next few months. We have been contacted by the applicant's engineer. So those are the uses that are contemplated in this area to the east. To the south, you have Oak Creek, and then this property right here has a general land use classification, but it's zoned agricultural. So at some point, if this property owner does want to exercise their development rights, they would need to come in for a rezoning. To the west, you have Imperial Parkway, which this section of Imperial Parkway is owned and maintained by Lee County Department of Transportation, so that's why they are a party to the companion development order application. And then to the west of that, you have some multi... Not multi-family, sorry. The land use is medium density, multifamily, and it's zoned mobile home. So you have existing residences there. And to the north, you have, again, the continuation of the plan development, which is general commercial. There's the Tire Kingdom, the vacant Albertson's property, the Comedy Club, and then this is the gas station... No, this is the gas station right here, sorry. That's SunTrust Bank. So those are the uses that you have here, and then you have Benita Beach Road and some other commercial uses and some residential. And these are... We're also giving you some aerial screenshots of the property in case you didn't have the opportunity to go on site. So this is the property looking to the north. So this is Oak Creek. That's the bridge and control structure over Imperial Parkway. Here is a viewpoint looking south on Imperial Parkway. This is the residential streets that you see. This is to the north of the project. This is the Comedy Club, or Southwest Florida Performing Arts Center, rather, that is there to the north. And then here, this is the internal road system that's going to be connecting these properties together. In the staff report, as we explained, the future land use classification is general commercial, so the shopping center use that is currently there is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The zoning, it's a commercial plan development. The uses that are there are consistent with the zoning designation for the property, and as I stated before, it's a retail shopping center. This is the proposed master concept plan modification that we are adding to the existing zoning document to reflect the additional access point. It's an engineering-level detailed plan, so it's site-specific to that actual part of the plan development, master concept plan. And here, I'm going to have environmental come up and speak based on their review of the case, and then followed by that will be engineering.
Good morning, everyone. Mike Kirby, Senior Environmental Specialist for Community Development. I did visit the site, have a look around, and I'll go over these three concepts for you. All right. Number one, existing site conditions for the develop... Or the improvement area. It is kind of a landscape buffer and just an open space there between the pond and the proposed roadway. So we did negotiate with the owners, developers, and any required buffer trees or landscape area will be replaced. All right? Secondly, the median landscaping. There are some existing trees. May I have... Here we are. So I was talking about... I was talking about this area right here first, that if there already... There are a few trees that should be replaced there, most likely. Okay. And then, secondly, the median landscaping. There are some median trees in here, so we also negotiated with the developers, again, to replace these trees, you know, in adjacent areas right there. So those two items should be taken care of. Thirdly, open space. Okay, they're going to be paving a little bit of green space. It came to about .23 acres, okay? Their open space requirement is 8.42 acres. They currently have 19.04 acres of open space, so their net is still 8.81 acres of open space, which is above the 8.42 required. So they're fine with their open space. They don't need to create any more. And let's see, there were obviously not many environmental concerns of disturbed dairy to begin with. I think that'll about wrap it up, Jackie.
Do you want questions relative to that presentation now or later?
At the end, at the end of the presentation.
Hi. Stuart Smith, Development and Review Engineer for Community Development. This... I'll talk a little bit about the access to this site and the improvements that I believe are made by the request of the applicant. The access management for, as far as trucks, delivery trucks entering this site, it's vacant now as far as the structure's concerned, but the delivery trucks to the center have to come in the front way. There's no way to get to the back without coming in the front. Access off of Benita Beach Road and then circling around to the back for deliveries. So the request for the median opening will allow southbound delivery trucks and eastbound on Benita Beach Road delivery trucks to enter through the median opening directly to the back. It'd be less conflict with delivery trucks in the outside area along Benita Beach Road. The median opening is a short distance, less than the 660-foot requirement for separation. Lee County, we've worked very closely with Lee County, as has been indicated. This is a Lee County-maintained road, and Lee County has already granted a deviation to the applicant to be less than the 660-foot separation, recognizing that this is a safer access to that facility as it develops. The... As it gets internal to the center, there will be some impacts on that existing lake that is there, which can be handled very easily by a modification to the water management permit. The reason I seem to know so much about the details of this project is because the applicant is also processing a development order at this time simultaneously with details associated with this plan. I'm available to answer any questions, even if it relates to a detail of the construction, but I'll save that for later.
Excuse... Just, I know we want questions to be held, but you talk about the future development of the hotel. Is that what you're talking about when you say that this...
No, the detail... The detailed construction plans for how physically this would be constructed.
Understand.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart.
Right now, I'd like to go over the conditions of approval that are outlined in the staff report. So the first one just acknowledges the master concept plan approval modification and the stamp perceived date. Number two, goes ahead and memorializes all the existing zoning documents that still bound to this property, except as modified by this request. Number three, notates landscape and buffering conditions. What was important to staff during this review, not only in the LDO application, but also the zoning application, is that the median modifications be replanted, if not to the same or a higher standard. This is one of the gateways to the city. It's close to the Benita Beach Road corridor, so it was very important to us that we made sure that that median was replanted accordingly. And we wanted to make sure it was also a coordination effort between Lee County and the city, so we definitely got an attractive median. We also went ahead and put the applicant on notice, which we did in the companion development order application relative to the large-scale retail ordinance that has been approved by the city and those applicability standards that are set forth in that document. So the applicant has acknowledged that, and there's a chance in the future, once this is approved, if approved, and then, once the applicant secures a tenant, based on those modifications, that they could trip the threshold standards for the large-scale retail ordinance at a later date. There's also a condition there relative to the engineering water quality standards outlined in our comprehensive plan that we put in essentially every zoning ordinance document as a boilerplate condition. And then we have other conditions relative to the transportation review and coordination with Lee County Development of Transit... Department of Transportation. And also, I wanted to make it clear that, you know, this amendment is subject to the companion Lee County Development Order application that has to be reviewed and processed by their office, because it is there right away. So without the modifications, the access point essentially is not applicable. Surrounding property and compatibility, which I went over previously with the aerials, you know, staff found that this modification as proposed was compatible with the surrounding area, and also the uses in general are not changing, and on four other occasions, the uses have been found consistent with the comprehensive plan. The development patterns have not changed significantly with, again, relative to Oak Creek. That serves as a buffer between the existing residential areas in addition to another lot that has a general commercial land use classification, so there is substantial buffering available to the residences south of that area. And then regarding public correspondence, I did have two property owners or the representatives that did contact us relative to the case inside the plan development that were very supportive of this additional access point and the median modifications. And then also, a member of the public, a husband and wife, came in to talk to us about the modification, and they lived off of Tropic Drive. And after we were able to talk with them, they appeared to be comfortable with the modification as well. Consistency with the Benita Plan, that is covered in the staff report, in terms of allowable uses, again, the uses aren't changing, so we found it consistent with that classification in addition to the general commercial category. The memorization of incompatibility, we felt there was substantial buffers in place, whether they be done by this applicant or they were natural features, so we felt that was compatible. The availability of public facilities, they will be determining that at time of local development order, again, with our engineer and Lee County Department of Transportation. And in terms of the Benita Beach Road corridor and the visioning process that is being set forth right now with the city's consultant, this does not directly impact Benita Beach Road, and it is south of that intersection where we're trying to create our multimodal paths. This actually probably enhances it by moving truck traffic off of Benita Beach Road and coming through an alternate route. So based on those nine findings that I discussed earlier, staff felt that we were able to say yes to all of these questions, either by virtue of the existing site conditions or through our conditions of approval as proposed. Therefore, that was staff's recommendation to approve this amendment request, and we are here for any questions that you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Jackie. We will now open it up for any questions of staff from the... From the board? Mr. Worster?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. The 2005 zoning that was included in our packet very clearly shows that this area is a detention area and a open space, that this driveway extension would impact. The... The lake to the south of the drive, as it exists today, in a heavy storm event, actually floods back into the area where the driveway is. Like last Saturday, there was water in that area. It is also a, visually, obviously, a wetland area. There are no presentation relative to the stormwater detention that is currently there that would be reduced when you put a new drive across the stormwater detention. That, number one. Number two, the Lee County standards of 600 feet for separation of entrances is really a fairly standard requirement. They're reducing this to 234 feet, I believe, from 600. That's roughly a 60% reduction of the requirement. And you have requirements. Why don't we follow the requirements as opposed to dramatically violate the requirements? For right now, that's all I have... I'd like to have answered.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. In your opening remarks, you mentioned the impact to Butler Street, Butler Drive, and I guess, you know, we're also supposed to consider performance standards, and I would question how to... What are the performance standards relative to Butler Drive, and what are they losing? What are they gaining? Have you had any input from residents on Butler Drive concerning this?
Okay. Any other questions before we turn it back to staff to respond to the questions?
My questions were already posed by other members. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to address the questions at this time?
Sure. I'm going to let the engineers discuss the water management questions. Mr. Kirby can address the open space questions, and then Stuart can somewhat address the Lee County deviation requirements, and I'll supplement as necessary in regards to their input to the process, and then I'll address Butler Drive.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith?
Okay. This median opening that they're requesting is, is further than 200 and some feet that you referenced from this new median opening, further than 200 and some feet, I forget the exact figure you mentioned, but from Imperial. What Lee County and the city is considering granting here is a deviation from the 660 requirement that we have in our code, and then, I believe you referenced 600 in, in your, your statement for Lee County, the separation, access management separation from the intersection of Imperial Parkway.
It's not a, is it 600-foot separation between curb cuts along an express, or a, the classification of Imperial Drive?
There are existing curb cuts into local streets along Imperial that are less than 660.
I understand.
But this is, they're, they're proposing a median opening less than 660 feet from Imperial Parkway. Correct, sir? And the, in order to get that less than 660-foot median opening, they need this deviation. And I personally feel it's something that should, should be granted for the reasons we generally stated earlier, that it provides safer access in and out of this center, particularly for, and takes those, as Jackie has mentioned, and I mentioned earlier, takes the trucks off of Bonita Beach Road, gives them a more direct access. As far as water management is concerned, you're correct. The water management, existing water management permit that exists for that, this area will be impacted, but can be modified, in my professional opinion, to make this work. If there are drainage issues, as you referred to, that need to be addressed, it could be simply a maintenance problem that needs to be addressed, but I can tell you, staff will address any flooding concerns if they exist during the development order review.
I appreciate your comments. The, the drainage, you're taking away dramatically the storage capacity that exists for a, for a design storm event in the overflow area. You're filling it in and putting a roadway in. There were no computations presented showing that there could be offsetting, mitigating detention for what's there currently.
This, this is not filling in the lake, sir.
No, no. I understand you're filling, you're filling in the overflow area that when there is a designed storm would be inundating that area, as it was last Saturday, inundating that area.
And you're correct. It would reduce an area that is used for retention now, but those calculations and the structures associated with that drainage can be modified to make it work, and I truly believe correct any problem that exists out there now.
Okay. Well, let's make a requirement that that be a responsibility of the applicant to show that this can adequately be done. That's relative to the detention.
Mm-hmm.
Now, in the zoning in 2005, it showed that as an open space area, and now, it's not going to be an open space area.
I understand your comment.
And does anybody care besides me?
Mike, would you like to address that?
I think what you're talking about is all interrelated when you're talking about the stormwater, and you're talking about the open space. And what I think, I was having some discussions, just to confirm what I had already thought, and it appears that I was on the right track, so I'm very pleased. The area that we're talking about being impacted is an area set for pretreatment prior to its discharge into the lake. The relocation of that into another area with a different design can accommodate the same volume and still provide that pretreatment before it goes into the lake. It wasn't necessarily an area for it to back up into. It was an area to be treated prior to discharge. In terms of the open space, the calculations originally with the zoning had provided above and beyond what was required. So, they had excess open space that we're glad that they had, but it was not part of our, our minimum standards. In this particular case, the loss or any potential loss of that, as long as it does not drop below that minimum threshold, would still be acceptable as far as the Land Development Code is concerned. So, really, what we're looking at is a coordination effort, assuming this application is approved by the city council, where we would be working with Water Management District to modify that permit to show how water was going to flow through the site. Obviously, be modified because we're going to, at a minimum, put a roadway through, through part of the pretreatment area. So, this, the, the numbers will still have to be the same. The standards that the Water Management District will hold this property to are not changing. The only thing that we are looking at modifying from that perspective is the flow and the treatment. So, your concerns are valid, and they will definitely be addressed, but concerns me is that the calculations, as you know, having done this a lot longer than I have, when you put these numbers together, they are not something that can be done on the back of a cocktail napkin, and do take a little bit of time for someone to think through volume, flow, grading, and that's why, at the zoning level, you normally will not see that level of detail because it is not necessary to show how the zoning is compatible at this level. It is information that's going to be required, not only by us, but also by other agencies that review different permits associated with the property at a later step, but we don't even get to that step unless, unless you and the city council have, have provided that blessing.
Thank you, Mr. Donner. I appreciate your comments, and I assume now that you will address the issue. I, I have to say, though, there was no mention made of it in, of the violation in the packet that the zoning board received.
And that could be an oversight on our part, but really, what, the, the, the knowledge that these issues are handled not only by our permits, as Stuart said, and in the development order process, but also through, at a minimum, the Water Management District, sometimes Corps of Engineers, they, they will also be dealing with these further downstream, pardon the pun.
Okay. Thank you. If I could also pick up on one other issue about the left turn lane into Butler?
Yes, sir.
In looking at it, I can't see why you're eliminating the left turn into Butler at the existing, I appreciate that the length of the left turn will be, left turn storage will need to be reduced, but frankly, there's very little need for the length that's there today.
I don't necessarily disagree, and, and that was not our call. DOT controls that roadway and determined in their coordination, or at least their review of our zoning application, that if this were to go forward, the changes in the design would require that that access be closed. And from the very beginning, the closure of that access was probably my greatest concern. I understood the point of providing direct truck access, and understood the need for that, especially as the center redeveloped, but balancing that with the convenience of people's homes is something that we took pretty seriously, and, and had we received probably more or more detailed concerns, we might have had a different recommendation. However, based upon the residents, you know, lack of concern, really, with, with the ability to obtain access, we saw no reason to offset the balance of the benefit that this would provide.
I understand. Look, could I ask you to possibly revisit the approval of the, of the closure of that median, based on the fact that you're going to complicate the, the existing congestion to make a U-turn at Bonita Beach Road in order to enter the site?
I can promise you, we will, we will revisit this with the Department of Transportation. However, the decision to keep it open or close it ultimately is not ours. The only decision we have is for this.
I understand that.
But I promise you, we will ask them to reconsider.
Thank you very much.
Are there any further questions?
Just a question, a clarification in line with that. If the DOT comes back and says that you can retain the Butler access, do you have to come back to the zoning board?
So, what I would like to do is, I want to answer the one question that Mr. Donnelly had, and then, I would like the applicant to address his coordination efforts with Lee County DOT, so you can understand the extensive amount of coordination that has been happening on their roadway. You know, again, we, as the city, are, are a party to this review based on the property that we control the access into, but we do not control that right away. So, just to reiterate again why we felt this application had to come here, you know, on, when median changes happen and access changes happen, in my coordination with, with Public Works and even the county, I asked, well, how do you notify property owners that you're changing their access? And they really didn't have an answer for us. So, that's why we put it through this public hearing process, because I wanted the residents on Butler and Tropic Drive to know that your access is changing. So, this is something that we felt was very important and needed to go through this process for the public hearing component. So, notices were sent, advertisements in the paper were done, signage was posted. So, that's how important it was to us to let them know, if Lee County DOT approves these median changes and the zoning goes through, I want these people to know. And again, no one from Butler Drive contacted us as staff. So, we felt comfortable, at least in that avenue, that we went ahead and were being proactive to notify them, because typically, there is no notification process for something like this.
And let me add to that. In Florida, there is no requirement, it's the use of your police power. So, when you're changing the access, if you're not touching people's private property, we have a right to make those changes to access at any given time as the governmental authority who controls that particular access. And, and usually, the reason we do so is for public safety and police power.
So, you're acting out of a, as a matter of courtesy to the residents by?
Ms. Genson is, yes.
What do you call it?
Ms. Genson?
I am.
Oh, yes.
She is. We felt it was that important.
I thought you were using a word I wasn't familiar with.
So, now, I would like...
This woman is.
I would like the applicant to respond in terms of their coordination with Lee County DOT.
Thank you, Jackie. Again, I'll introduce myself. I'm Peter Van Buskirk with Kimley Horn and Associates. I have been sworn, and I've been found as a competent expert witness in engineering and planning. Today with me is Mr. Mike Insola. Mike is the owner's representative here today at the hearing. I would like to just, I guess, reinforce what staff has presented here today. It's been an accurate depiction of what we're requesting at this PUD amendment, and I'll give you a little history. So, we've been working on this for almost two years, Mike? Almost two years. So, you know, one of the first things we did is, we met with Lee County DOT, understanding it was their roadway, and started in just concept of how this would work. And what you're looking at today is the, the end of where we got to, working with them, is we would have a full median opening, we would close the median opening of Butler, we'd have the two left turn lanes, one in Tropic, one into the project. I don't think everybody has agreed all along the way that this is a much better access for this center and will improve traffic generally at the intersection of Imperial and Bonita, as well as on Imperial in this area. Many of the other users within this plaza that are under other ownerships are very happy about us moving forward with this application and the improvement itself. We have already been to the South Water, South Florida Water Management District and have amended the permit, so I'd like to, just wanted to let you know that. We, we've been working on other things as we've been working with city staff to make sure that what we are proposing wouldn't get to the point where then we'd get to the Water Management District, and we'd say, and say, no, you can't do that. So, we have amended the permit. We've provided calculations to them to show that we are still meeting the water quality standards, as well as having our volumes available for the entire 25- and 100-year storm events. I think, just to maybe explain a little bit, too, of what you're, you're seeing there, this, this dry retention that you referred to, that we've modified in, as far as our permit, it was described correctly, that that area is a dry retention. It provides pretreatment before the water then flows into the wet detention. During a major storm event, that wet detention will, will stage up and will back up into the wet, the dry detention area. So, what you saw on Saturday was probably a pretty good storm event, so it did cause that backup. We anticipate you'll see the same thing in the reconfigured stormwater system as well. But we have modeled it, and it does function based on the new design, and again, we have, we have modified that permit accordingly. You know, relative to the 600-foot spacing, you know, we, we are constrained, so we have a developed site. We have limitations to the boundaries of the property. It's not like we're coming in with a new piece of property where we could lay it out and meet, you know, these spacing criterias. Anytime you get into what I'll call a redevelopment-type project, you, you do face some of these limitations, and you're typically going to have to ask for some deviations from the rules that are in place at that time, and, and that's why we're doing that through the city, as well as through the county. And I, in, in speaking with the county just recently, they're ready to issue our land, or limited development order as well for the roadway portion of the project only, because they don't deal with, of course, the development itself. That'd be the city of Bonita Springs. You know, the, the final numbers on, on open space as well, you know, the open space requirement was developed back when the, the PUD was originally approved, and that was with Lee County, at a little over nine acres of available versus our 8.41, I believe it is, required. Now, buildout has, has been occurring since 1999 through today, and will occur for the next few years. That final number of open space will be determined on, at final buildout. As long as it's over the required 8.41, it will meet the requirements of the city and what were the requirements of the county at the time. Again, with the, the access point at Butler, that was discussed with LC DOT a long time ago, and when we first got into this, that was their recommendation, so we followed their recommendation. And if you look at the U-turns that were needed to be made to come back into the plaza because of that median being in place versus the small number that would be needed for northbound travel on Imperial back to Butler, it's very, very minor in comparison. So, we were improving the situation in that area, and we're, you know, happy to do that. It's going to help the plaza. Right now, we've got, you know, space that's not occupied, and without that access, it's difficult to find tenants, and we hope that with that new access, we'll fill that plaza up, and it'll be vibrant plaza for the city again. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, or Mike would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Hearing none. Thank you. At this time, do we have any public input? Anybody from the public wish to come forward? I thought you might.
Okay. Rick Steinmeier. Another access to this property is necessary. It's pretty difficult to get the restaurant on the corner. You've got to come down, do a U-turn. It's a shame you can't put it, cut through the access at Butler, through the median, through Butler. And of course, I'm concerned about the water retention down there at Oak Creek, but I, it does need another access to this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Any other public comment? Okay. Hearing none. Any further discussion? I guess we'll have a motion. Somebody want to make a motion to?
I make a motion to accept the request subject to the comments made by staff.
Do we need to be more specific?
Do you mean the conditions?
The conditions, yes.
Yeah, the conditions.
Which would be the modification of the retention area, and the other one had to do with working out the details with DOT?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second. Roll call?
Discussion.
Oh, wait a minute. Excuse me. Discussion. Thank you.
I have a question for staff.
Go ahead, Barbara.
Did DOT indicate why they wanted to just close Butler?
The applicant would be best to answer that, but as I understood based on our conversations, to make Butler a full meaning access would impact the left, or leftbound turn lanes, the double turn lanes onto Bonita Beach Road to go westbound. So there was no way to make Butler the full meaning open based on the current design and the traffic volumes on Imperial Parkway.
Was it my understanding that one of the, was it my understanding that one of the major reasons for this also was to allow delivery vehicles access, easier access, without impacting Bonita Beach Road?
Yeah, because actually, a few years ago, when the Southwest Florida Performing Arts Center wanted to locate here, they wanted Butler to be a full meaning opening. And that was my discussion with Lee County DOT on why they couldn't make it because of the traffic volumes and the queuing for the double left turn lanes onto Beach Road. So it just so happens with this additional access point further to the south with some of the median modifications that this applicant is proposing, Lee County DOT did find it acceptable. Thank you.
Okay, good. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Barbara Brunswick Cannon.
Aye.
Chairman Brunswick.
Aye.
Richard Donnelly.
Yes.
Frank Lyles.
Aye.
And James Worster.
Yes.
The motion is approved. And we thank you for your presentation, both sides. Do I have the minutes from last week, last month? Before we close business here? Can I have a motion? Has everybody been presented with the minutes? You haven't because you weren't here. Did we see?
I did not see the minutes.
I don't think?
Okay.
Okay. Do you want to hold that for next October and we'll approve last month and this month in October? Very good. Having no further business, we will see you on October 18th. Thank you for your time.